Hello, check one. Testing one two. Check your. [Silence] Testing one two. Check your. 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 Testing one two.
We're just ready for that.
Let's start off workshop. Let's call the order in the workshop meeting for December 20th, 2022 at 5:05 PM. Clerk, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Escobia?
Here.
Councilmember Bamanco?
Here.
Councilmember Stoil?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember Alar D'Amico?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
We have work to do, ho, ho, ho!
And to the people with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
It was Christmas Eve at eight in the court.
Okay, communication from the mayor, including disapproval messages. The C M will come back to that. Okay, communication from the mayor, including disapproval messages. The C M will come back to that.
I have the 2023 Budget Laiamito message, budget resolution 98-2022.
Okay, any discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, we'll go on to communication from the public and petition.
Request from Eric Palaz that the council consider naming a street in honor of one of the best coaches, Coach Frank Jigogo.
Any discussion, council?
We'll get on that in the reelect what Eric sent you. You need to give the address or his name or phone number. We need his name, we need his phone number, so you can get back to him.
Okay.
And the contact would be, uh, okay, Frank? Yes.
So, when I noticed that, I did see that it was very shy of information, but there was no way to get ahold of the gentleman, and I am in no position to deny anybody's request. So that's why it did in fact make it onto the agenda today.
We've got a no-brainer solution for it. I heard, I heard. I like it.
I also agree. We've been addressing that issue for some time that Marty just brought up, the contact, telephone number and address we needed. It's been several years.
Yeah, it's hard to know.
Yeah, right.
Got brought up and we talked about it.
Right. I understand.
And I did, I have addressed that. I was out of the office when that came in, so I have addressed that with my staff.
And then we're going to use that, Richard's referral. We're going to receive and file that referral. Okay? Let's go back. Mayor, communication from the mayor and disapproval messages? Nothing? Thank you. Let's move on to stating a special committee. Councilwoman Escobia? Second, Councilman Bamanco?
The only thing I have to say, I will be, uh, the proposed city attorney. I will be one of the persons, if wanted, to take that off the table so we can go on.
I'm second.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay. Councilman Stoil?
Nothing hurt.
Councilman Nichols? And I don't have anything numbered. Let's go to unfinished.
Number 94, resolution for intro number four to local law number four, 2022. City of Dunkirk, New York, a local law modifying chapter 15 of the Dunkirk State Code entitled Building Code Administration and Article 16 of the Charter entitled Department of Housing, Building and Zoning Enforcement.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, we're here. Okay.
All right, let's go to 97.
Number 97, resolution for consent to appointment of city attorney.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, let's go to prefiled. 101.
I have number 98.
Whoa, my bad.
Fiscal year 2023, proposed budget amendments.
Any discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, we'll go prefiled now.
Prefiled, number 101, resolution authorizing agreement to provide drug slash alcohol testing, lane for test, testing and consulting.
Any discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, we'll go 102.
Number 102, resolution authorizing safety disconnect installation by professional services for city new LED streetlights.
Any discussion?
Well, we look back at the, it was a college or university trustee meeting. I just watched it and somebody said, somebody got out and spoke and said something negative about our streetlights. And so I just thought maybe Randy or the mayor could say something positive about our LED lights and how we're saving money.
Um, you guys want to come up with something and we'll do that before the vote? Sure. Just to give somewhat of a report on that? That be okay?
Yeah.
Ready? Give you enough time to think, get something happen? Okay. Then we'll do that. Under 102, Councilwoman, would you make sure you bring that back up? Okay. All right, new business?
I don't have any new business.
Me either. Uh, can we have motion, Richard? I got Stoil's was second by Nichols. Call the roll.
Councilmember Escobia?
Hi.
Councilmember Bamanco?
Councilmember Stoil?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alar D'Amico?
Aye, we're adjourned.
So we have a, uh, we have a public hearing in about five minutes.
I'm assuming we're going to the court.
No, we have that for the building code.
Would you be in favor?
That's the end of my campaign.
I'll pardon you there.
Hard to find a good speaker. It's okay.
I'll order the public hearing December 6, 2022 at 5:20. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Luskowiac?
Here.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyel?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember Alar D'Amico?
Here.
Can we start with the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, clerk, would you read the notice of public hearing, please?
Notice of public hearing. Please take notice that at a regular meeting of the City of Dunkirk Common Council held on December 6, 2022, Resolution Number 94-2022 was presented to the Common Council, which resolution is entitled, Intro Number 4 to Local Law Number 4-2022, City of Dunkirk, New York, a local law modifying Chapter 15 of the city code entitled Building Code Administration and Article 16 of the city charter entitled Department of Housing, Building, and Zoning Enforcement. Please take further notice that a public hearing will be held on Resolution Number 94-2022 on December 20, 2022 at 5:15 PM in the council chambers to hear any and all interested persons.
Okay, the hearing is open and privilege of the floor is now open also. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the public hearing? Okay. We'll go once, going twice, we'll go a third time, and the floor is now closed. Okay?
Good job, Al.
Could I have a, you're in motion to close the hearing, correct? Yeah. I just need a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Councilman Bemanto, second by Stoyel.
Councilmember Luskowiac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyel?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alar D'Amico?
Aye.
Carried, meeting's closed. Counsel, we good? Okay. Let's call to order the regular meeting for December 20, 2022 at 5:30 PM. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Luskowiac?
Here.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyel?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember Alar D'Amico?
Here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, certification of prior meeting?
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, December 6, 2022, was presented to the mayor on Tuesday, December 13, 2022, and the minutes of the special common council meeting of Tuesday, December 13, 2022, was presented to the mayor on Friday, December 16, 2022. Pursuant to Section 3.03 of the Dunkirk City Charter, all items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect with the exception of Resolution Number 98-2022, which the mayor vetoed on December 13, 2022 during that meeting. And witness wherefore, I have here to set my hand and seal of the City of Dunkirk this 20th day of December, 2022.
Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading? I got Nichols, can I have a second? Second by Luskowiac.
Councilmember Luskowiac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyel?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember Alar D'Amico?
Aye, carried.
Number three, reading of the privilege of the floor regulations.
The privilege of the floor shall be extended to any person appearing for themselves, in which case that individual shall be limited to three minutes, and to any person representing a group who shall be limited to five minutes. When recognized, please stand and state your name and address. The city clerk should have the duty of maintaining such time limits, and the councilman-at-large may determine in his discretion whether individuals are speaking for themselves or representing groups. Councilman-at-large D'Amico shall maintain good order and may require any speaker to cease speaking if remarks are made in bad taste or are slanderous or non-jurimy to any action taken or contemplated by council. The time limit specified shall be strictly adhered to except that a speaker may be allowed to complete a statement or thought started before such time has expired.
Thank you. Privilege of the floor is now open. If anyone would like to speak? None. Going once, going twice, third time, the floor is now closed. Communication from the mayor, including disapproval messages. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of announcements to make here. First of all, I just want to remind the council again that the changes that were made to my proposed budget, all but one, have been vetoed. Secondly, I would like to commend members of our Department of Public Works. This past week, they had a water main break. They had to stay out there in the cold water for quite a long period of time. Two of them had to be hospitalized. But I wanted to publicly commend their efforts in doing their job and their duties. It's very much appreciated, and I thought it should be acknowledged. Also would like to make an announcement today that we were notified by the governor's office that one of the grant proposals that we put in for has been approved at the state level. It's a $1 million grant that will be coming to revitalize our downtown area, the old P&amp;G building, and I would like to have our DP, or our development director expand on that. I'd also like to announce that I received a phone call today from Senator Schumer's regional director just letting us know that the $4.75 million that were earmarked for the City of Dunkirk have now become formalized, and the city will be receiving $4.75 million for the break wall plan that we have in place. That's great news for the city. And I would also like to turn it over to our development director so he can expand a little bit on what this means to the city.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor mentioned, Senator Schumer's office is in contact with the mayor earlier this morning, and myself after, he had spoken to the mayor, Matt Rovell, who has taken over for Jordan Nicholson. But this process all began early in the year when the mayor was working with Senator Schumer's office in terms of what we have been trying to accomplish here in Dunkirk for a number of years, and that's to build breakwaters, detached breakwaters in the Dunkirk Harbor to quell the action of waves that come in from nor'easters and are very destructive, reflect off the pier, Dunkirk Pier, and damage boats and docks and so forth. We put in, I wrote a grant request, a congressionally directed spending request to Senator Schumer for about $5.1 million for construction of detached breakwater in the harbor and also looking at segmented offshore breakwaters a little further east to protect basically the sea wall, to create additional beach area, and to just protect the infrastructure that is going along the lakefront. We use this basically diagram. Senator Schumer held it up last, if you all recall, last year, or this past year in the spring, and what we're talking about is this area here off the pier and the segmented breakwaters. And after that meeting, the mayor went out with Senator Schumer in probably some of the worst weather you can imagine, cold, rainy, and he stood out there, and the mayor showed him exactly what we were talking about. And like he promised he would that day, he came through, and we just received word this morning from the Senate Appropriations Committee from Senator Leahy that through the Energy and Water Development and Related Agencies Appropriations Act of 2023, Dunkirk Harbor is in line to receive $4.753 million for the construction of these. Additionally, our Department of Development has put in an application to the federal government through the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Agency for half a million dollars for design and engineering, and we're just waiting to hear back on that. And again, this was a collaborative effort with mayor, my department. EJ is here too. He helped us put this together with the county, with Dave McCoy from the county, and numerous others that we have been working with Senator Schumer and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Department of Environmental Conservation. Very collaborative effort, and I think that we're finally going to see that come to fruition in the next several years after this is all designed, permitted, and all the necessary design and engineering has happened. So very exciting news there. The second piece of news came in, probably about an hour after that, we got a call from Empire State Development, from officials there, basically congratulating us that our Restore New York Round Six application was awarded $1 million. Basically, what the program was called, Central Avenue Transformation. And as we've been talking, you know, we want to revitalize Central Avenue. It's not just about the waterfront, but coming up to the spine of the city, Central Avenue. And we've put together this proposal, and we have a developer here, Mr. Steinberg, who owns two buildings, a former P&amp;G, and also another building at 423 to 427 Central Avenue. And it's basically to rehab it, that building, to rehab the upstairs, second floor into apartments, potentially four apartments that could be affordable apartments, rehab the space on the ground for more commercial and rental space. And he also received, part of the project is for the P&amp;G, to follow through with his proposal to create a Broadway market type of concept with vendors in there. And this is a very exciting project that will help reinvigorate, start to reinvigorate Central Avenue. And this is just the beginning, and we're putting together additional Restore New York Round Seven that's going to be due in January, and I'll probably be bringing something in front of you at the beginning of the year to kind of identify what the project is and the locations on Central Avenue. We received word back from Empire State Development late Friday afternoon that our intent-to-apply requests have been granted so that we can go forward and put forth applications that are going to be competitive but could be transformational to our city. And I think we have a very good plan here in place, and we expect to hear more good news.
Are you good, Ben?
And again, want to thank Governor Hochul, Senator Schumer. Governor Hochul made the Restore New York Award coming to Dunkirk was responsible for that, and we want to thank her, as well as Senator Schumer, that they are in full support of what we're trying to do here in Dunkirk.
Mr. Chairman, I also would just like to acknowledge that today is our current city attorney's last meeting with the City of Dunkirk as city attorney. Just like to publicly commend the job that he has done. When he came in, we told him that he had a year to move into the city. He moved his family into the city, and I really appreciate the work that he has done, and he's done a good job for the city. I just wanted to acknowledge that today is his last day. Also want to let the council know that... Also want to let the council know that with an end comes a beginning. The newly appointed city attorney is present, hoping to be approved by this council. If you have any questions for him, Mr. Bobzien is sitting right here. And...
Oh, you want to do it now? Okay, because I thought it was going later, but that's okay. If you want, let's, we can go into that next. We can go on presentations, that's fine.
To give everyone in the audience a quick idea of why we are all here. On December 4, there was an incident that happened here in our community that brought honor and distinction to these men of our police and fire department. And Captain McCosky is going to take over here in a minute to tell you what happened and why we are here to honor them tonight. Fire chief and I will be presenting awards, and our officers will be getting merit badges as well. Captain, would you come up and take over from here?
On December 4, 2022, at about 4:45 AM, 11:00 PM, the Sunday shift responded to an undisclosed hit presence in the city with the initial information that several people were unresponsive, possibly overdosed. It was determined at this time the address was incorrect. Using the officer's past experiences and records, numerous addresses were checked for about 45 minutes. At about 5:30 AM, a call was received of the correct address. With acting desiderated at the communications desk, Sergeant Oralano, Officer Gomez, Foy, Hallmark, and Curtis arrived on scene to discover five people unresponsive in different areas within the location. The officers were met with a potential multiple casualty situation. I am easily can't describe the incident better, so straight from Sergeant Oralano's ladder to the chief and I commending the officers for going above and beyond. Quote, "The officers began rendering medical care and administering Narcan for supplement as prior to rescue personnel arrival. As rescue personnel arrived, officers continued providing assistance in any manner they could, from patient care to retrieving equipment and structures for the fire department, in addition to controlling volatile and continuing... The officers remained calm and did whatever was needed to help the victim's inefficient and professional manner. There's no doubt in my mind that their actions that morning contributed to these five lives being saved. Sergeant Oralano went out to commend the actions of the Dunkirk Department through on the fire departments and All-Star Ambulances. They did an outstanding job providing medical care in an intense scene. They didn't, we appreciate the close-related relationship that we were able to have with them, especially during an incident such as this," end quote. After reviewing the body cam footage, radio transmissions, and telephone calls, case paperwork, and recommendations to the chief, the officers involved received the department's meritorious police service award, and he agreed. It was clear to all of us that this was a chaotic scene that was controlled by officers and firefighters were side by side, all while saving lives. The actions of the officers and the firefighters were audible, performed beyond normal expectations, and made us all proud. Thank you, guys, and congratulations to y'all.
Lieutenant White, who's the night shift command officer with me here. We also have one for Officer Emily Foy, who was sick and unable to be here tonight.
I'd like to just expound on what Captain McCosky said about the incident that evening. This incident showed a couple of things, and one, one of the things that Captain spoke about is the good working relationship that we have between agencies. I would say that it's unprecedented how well we work together, the police department and the EMS agencies that were involved. And we shouldn't forget also All-Star Ambulance, Corrón Fire, and Chautauqua County EMS. We hold our department members to a high standard, as the community should expect. This was an example of our personnel exceeding those standards. We are faced with challenges almost daily. Some incidents are exceptionally challenging. Being faced with five patients with many of them not breathing is an example of an incident that takes exceptional skills and the ability to critically perform those skills. The outcome of all these patients surviving is truly remarkable. I'm proud to present the Dunkirk... I'm proud to present Dunkirk Fire Department members, Jared Meyer, who was the acting lieutenant that night. He arrived on location, identified what was going on, communicated with the police department, made sure we had the assets, the ambulances coming in, and communicated with the hospital the situation that we had, along with firefighter Patrick Osman, firefighter Patrick Grant, new Patricks, and firefighter Kevin Gany, who's not here tonight. We're going to present them with a departmental letter of merit, and I'm very proud to present that to them tonight.
We'll have the mayor and our public safety chair come up and say a few words. I just want to expound a little bit on what Chief Edmund said. In all my years working for this city, the relationship between our two departments is the best I have ever seen in my entire career here. Fire chief and I are very good friends, and it shows in both of our departments. We work together every single day to get the best of public safety to this community that we serve, and tonight is a perfect example of it.
I just would like to mention tonight that I've always said since I came into office that we have the most professional police officers and firefighters in this region, are none. I speak to you as a retired police officer, and I can tell you that we have very well-trained members of our team here. But as a human being, no training has prepared you for what each member of our team behind you have experienced. They will not be the same people they were before that incident. That incident will change them individually and as a team. I know that because I've had that experience. So I can tell you that I stand before you as mayor, very proud of our team, and I commend all of you for a job well done. They saved lives, and whether these folks were drug users or not, a life is a life. What they did, they're heroes. In my book, they're heroes. So, thank you.
I look out at you guys, and I look back, 1974. Officer Ken Sikorski, now Dave, you might have, I don't know if you were... We actually tried to do this at a Christmas party. Bring the two parts, departments together, the work as one, two uniformed groups. Well, before I knew it, one guy was flying over a table, this guy was flying over this way. Lieutenant Pulaski came and said, "Get your guys out of here. This is what it's all about. You guys, you guys work hand in hand every single day." And anybody that watches this meeting, and these two chiefs, one of you guys, any one of our guys in the department, and especially in the last month or two months, these guys in the PD, I compliment you time and time and time again. Your alertness, right outside the front door, a month ago, you guys brought in the drug dealer, took the stuff off the street. It's not our fault, we're working on it. You do have a friend with, George Barillo, Senator Barillo, and Andy Goodell, trying to get bail back. I know you guys are put up in a bad, bad position. You work your butts off and then watch them walk out the door. These guys, they go in, they don't know if they're coming out. But looking at this group, I know they're going to come out because they got something to do after their shifts are done. Congratulations, guys, and I'm proud as hell as you, I'm proud as hell as they used to be one. And you guys, Dave changes you guys so much, I never got a chance to meet a half you guys. But we're proud to have you in our department, and I hope the city is proud of you as well. Thank you.
Mayor, did you try to...
I think they want you up there for a picture.
Huh?
They want you up there for a picture.
I do.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. Good job, guys. I'm actually, I'm... I have to... Wait. No? 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 Mayor, congratulations.
Thank you. I'm going to check on this. Okay, we'll move forward. Mayor, do you have anything to add under your communication?
Excuse me?
Do you have anything more to add under your communication?
Uh, no, I think that covers it. Thank you.
Number one?
Number one, 2023 budget line item veto message, budget resolution number 98-2022.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none? Call the roll?
Yeah. What do we vote? Call the vote?
Hold on.
This is just a FYI, the vote is actually under unfinished business.
Oh.
It's the third one under unfinished business. You put it up for reconsideration.
This is just a message that he handed out at the last meeting.
Okay. Very good. You're doing what?
No.
Hmm?
Appreciate your thought. They're going to blink it off the table and say no.
Okay. Okay. So then we're going to move on to communication to the public.
Number one, request from Eric Gloss that the council consider naming a city street in honor of one of the best coaches, Coach Frank Jagoda.
Any discussion, council?
Yes, councilman. I talked with Mr. Woodbury, Department of Streets Department, and anyway, my suggestion was to him, instead of doing a street, we don't want to start precedents, we don't want to be disrespectful to Mr. Jagoda. And I talked with Randy, and I suggested that they take from Lucas Avenue to Sixth Street, the street, the road that goes between and connects both streets on school property in front of the bleachers and name that for Frank. And I'm sure he would be pleased since those are his fields that he played on for a great many years. Instead of taking one of our, our streets, we just don't want to start taking a precedence and start naming, I know Frank's done a great job for a great many years, but I think he would be more proud if it started right at the school level.
Okay. So what I think we'd like to do is we were going to receive and file this, and then as, as we talked about earlier, we're going to refer it through committee, through DPW, and then get some type of working committee together.
And that, that because at school grounds, we would have to refer, D.C. government would have to work in conjunction with the school, with their facilities person.
Correct.
But I, as I told Council Nichols, I think it's an excellent idea.
Hmm, I agree.
A great proper tribute to Mr. Jagoda.
And that's just again, that you're going to set up the, the availability to work this back through the school.
Mayor, just thank you, Eric, for bringing it to our attention, but we're trying to, to come to a happy medium here so that everybody's, everybody's happy about it. And it's right off of Marauder Drive, so it ties it all together.
Okay, good. All right, moving on, we'll go to reports as standing in special committees. Councilwoman, let's go over here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Economic Development Director for your networking and work in obtaining the earmarked $4.7 million and the $1 million from the Empire State Development. It'll help our local and visiting voting population, along with the new beginning of a downtown area, and therefore our economy. I'm, I'm very excited. Director of DPW, Randy Woodbury. I've noticed other municipalities are interested in LED lighting for their streets. How is the lighting system working, that lighting system working for our city?
Sure. Thank you, councilwoman. The LED lighting is saving the city more than a quarter million dollars a year in energy and reducing the city's carbon footprint, and also making the light, instead of yellow lights, it's white, white lights, so it's safer. There have been some concerns about the intensity of the light. We initially had them up full brightness, and we turned them down a little bit, facing some complaints, so we can tweak that. And I think if maybe the Dunkirk Police Patrols that patrol at night and report if a light is out and things like that would be a good mechanism to get areas, if they would like them to be a little bit brighter, because one or the other, in, in addition to saving money, it's also made the city safer. It's much easier to see under white light than it is under yellow light. You can identify colors, you can see for a longer distance, and maybe some of them have to be more intense, but it's, it's a wonderful project. We have a little bit of work to be done under resolution number 102 coming up, so we want to address that now, so we don't have to address it again. But they do have to have some safety disconnects. When we put those up, we want to accelerate the remove, the replacement of the arms that were damaged in a storm, and to make sure that the entire city is lit up as well as every place else. So there are a couple of hiccups, but by and large, big money savings, and the city is safer. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Berman?
Yes, just taking off what Natalie said. Mayor, congratulations on giving the $4.75 million for the break wall. We've needed that for decades and decades and decades, and the City of Dunkirk, it's finally coming, and another million dollar for Central Avenue, that, that's awesome. Good job, guys. Thank you very much. I want to talk a little bit about the attorney resolution tonight. I will vote to take it off the table. I will vote for Mr. Bobzien to be put in. Like I said, Richard's last meeting of the year is right now. We got to have an attorney in there by January 1st. He comes with an impeccable resume, and I think he'd be a great asset to the city, and should be a no brainer if we bring him in. And also, I want to, everybody have a great holiday season, Happy New Year, everybody please be safe.
Thank you. Councilman Stoyl?
Yeah, we, I pretty much took care of that during the award system. But I also want to congratulate you guys for, anytime you can suck so many out of the government, bring it here. I'm for it. So, thank you for that, and, and wish everybody a happy, happy, a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. And I believe Marty said he was, well, you were buying, what day was it?
Uh, by what?
Everything and anything.
Okay, thank you, councilman, councilwoman Nichols.
Yes, it is great news to get the $4.75 million. That segmented offshore break wall has been in the works since the late 90s, and there just never seemed to be the money available to pursue the idea. I'm glad there's so many people out there to see the necessity and the savings. I mean, after what happened after one storm on Halloween and demand, demolished the wall down there, and especially Lakefront Boulevard. And I hope there is money for that, for part of that. And if not, maybe there can be another grant looked at for another one out there, because I know FEMA can only come in so many times to help us re, rebuild a wall that if we didn't take preventative measures to get something with the fierce, our fierce Lake Erie. Thank you. Second of all, I would just like to commend our ACO. We had a, a four-legged fugitive on the loose since last Wednesday out at the Point, and he was trying to capture it. With his training and ability, it did, it was captured yesterday, and it is at, that, doing well, but it was a long process, and he had some hindrance in there, but he prevailed, and he did, he did rescue the, the critter off the cliffs at the Point by the lighthouse. I'm not going to say anything now, but I just, I do want to make mention that on Chapter 15, it's been a long haul, a long time in, with Glenn and Allen working on this project, that many hours went into putting it together so that we are in compliance with the state. Thank you both for all your hard work on that. With closing, I'd like to say Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and a very Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you. Couple parts on this. Obviously, there's, you know, congratulations, Mayor, Vince, I mean, that was, that could be a game changer down the road, especially, you know, our waterfront, and I mean, that's a big deal, so congratulations. Mayor, can you expound a little bit? I didn't hear about our Water Department workers actually being hospitalized, working through a call. Are they okay? Are they back to work?
Yes, they're both okay and doing well, back to work.
All right. Again, I want to, I want to, I can't thank our workers enough for the job they do. You saw, you know, today here with police and fire, parks and recreation and water and, you know, just the list goes on, and I want to commend our workforce for, for just a tremendous job. Okay, with that, let's move on to unfinished business. Number 94.
So we need a motion to take this off the table. Number 94, resolution for intro number four to local law, number four, 2022, City of Dunkirk, New York, a local law modifying Chapter 15 of the Dunkirk City Code entitled Building Code Administration, and Article 16 of the Charter entitled Department of Housing, Building, and Zoning Enforcement.
Okay, can I have a motion to pull it off the table? Nichols, can I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Stoyl.
Councilmember Lescoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alarge D'Amico.
Aye. Kerry, go ahead and vote it.
Councilmember Lescoviac.
I'm sorry, have you, want to ask for any comments?
Yeah, is there any comments on the, on 94 resolution? Any discussion before we vote?
Councilmember Lescoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alarge D'Amico.
Aye. Kerry. 97.
Number 97, resolution for consent to appointment of city attorney.
Again, this would need a motion. It's table, Kermit. I got a motion from Bemano. Do I have a second from Lescoviac?
Councilmember Lescoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
No.
Councilmember Nichols.
No.
Councilmember Alarge D'Amico.
No. Number 98.
Number 98, fiscal year 2023, proposed budget amendments.
98, yes, so for consideration, we're going to need a motion and a second? Okay, so do I have a motion for consideration for 98? So with no action, we can't, nowhere to go on this, right? I don't have a motion or a second, I can't move on it.
So that it just now...
Okay. All right, let's move on to prefile. 101.
Number 101, resolution authorizing agreement to provide drug, alcohol testing, Langford testing and consulting.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, which call the roll.
Councilmember Lescoviac. Councilmember Luskoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alarz D'Amico.
Aye.
Carrie.
Number 102, resolution authorizing safety disconnect installation by professional services for city's new LED streetlights.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none? Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Luskoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alarz D'Amico.
Aye.
Carrie. 98? Okay.
They said that it dies. Does it die, die, or does it revert to veto, which is because of?
So in 98, it was a, a resolution to propose changes to the budget. It was vetoed. So if it's not taken off the table for reconsideration, veto stands?
Mm-hmm.
And the mayor's proposed budget will become the default budget.
So it stands? Correct. Yep. That's fine to get clarification. Okay, number 10, new business?
I have no new business, sir.
Okay, can I have a motion for adjournment? I got Nichols. I got a second by Luskoviac.
Councilmember Luskoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl. Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Alarz D'Amico.
Aye.
Word adjourned.[1298.41]